...the president, Mr. Senator Riquelme. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Over. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Getting over a sickness. I've been sick since January 3rd. I apologize for maybe bringing the illness here this evening, but nevertheless, we've got to continue to have our meetings. And again, welcome to everybody. We do have an agenda, but for us, so, uh, are there any changes?
Yeah, I recommend table number four introductions to the February 4th.
Anything else?
Nope.
That's it. Okay. Okay, with that change, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Okay, second. Thank you very much. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The director showed that he may be too... Hey, hey, hey.
You don't want to be nice. Nice to see you.
Okay, we think item four, uh, we're going on into minutes... Minutes of December 16th. Introductions.
Quick motion to the 20 minutes as presented.
Second. Okay, all in favor, if there's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, uh, minutes for December 16th, 2014. We go on to five student recognition. Uh, we have, uh, eight Laguna Acma cross-country state champions.
Alright.
Mr. President, uh, members of the board, Dr. Space. Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Space on the birth of your beautiful granddaughter. So, congratulations. That's a blessing. We, uh, are proud to be in the company of some great young gentlemen who fought through a lot of adversity and they worked as hard as any student athletes that you will have. I think cross-country is perhaps the toughest sport of all sports in the fact you don't get a lot of recognition. You know at the beginning of, uh, your competition that you're going to be hurting at the end of the competition, just a lot of physical pain and anguish that you have to go through. Um, but I am, we all are certainly proud of these young gentlemen and their coaches who brought a state championship, which is the 22nd state championship that the... 23rd, oh, Michael Jordan's number. The 23rd state championship that Laguna Acma High School has received. I know that, uh, they did fight through a lot of adversity and, uh, coaches will talk about them. And I would like to introduce the cross-country coaches, Coach Daniel Otero and Coach Marilyn Charama. I'll go ahead and let you come up and, uh... I know Coach Otero is a man of few words, so we're gonna make him talk up here.
First of all, I'd like to thank the superintendent and the school board for, uh, for recognizing these young men. We had a very good season. I'm only going to lose two of these boys, you know, I only have two seniors. And so, we're, you know, very young team. I, you know, I believe that we can win another state championship next year. They were district champions. Little bit about the state meet. It was a real, very close meet, you know, it was as close as you can get. You know, when we finished, we weren't sure if we won or not. Pacos was already, you know, celebrating. Uh, our boys were kind of like, "Did we win? Did we win?" And we were kind of like, "I don't know." You know, people were telling us, "You won by, you won by one point." And then somebody else was saying, "I think you lost by one point." And, you know, and I was waiting, you know, basically waiting for the results. You know, kind of, and everybody was like, you know, "Coach, you okay?" I said, "I don't know. I don't know if we won. I don't know if we got second. I don't know." You know, you know, it was either, you know, first or second because, you know, there was a, basically a two-team race. You know, the other teams were not even very close to us. And then when the results came out of, you know, the lady came out with the results and she wouldn't let me see them. You know, she was kind of hiding them from me, you know. Trying to see, the other coaches were, the other coaches were laughing at me and everything else because I'm, you know, I'm trying to see the results, you know. And I kind of looked at the result, kind of, kind of little glance of it. It kind of looked like, you know, the first place team was a long lead. So I said, "I think we won. I think we won." You know, you know, Pacos, you know, Laguna Acma. When they put them up, you know, you know, you know, we won. You know, the kids found it out, found out that we did win. Everyone was happy. We won by one point. And it came down to our fifth man. Was it our fifth man passed one boy at the end, you know, at the end? And I made a difference. We would have been tied. And they would have gone to the sixth man. We would have won. Even then, it would have been even closer. But it was close. You saw the difference. Pacos fans and the Pacos runners were all sudden, they were crying. You know, they weren't very happy. I know the Rio Rancho coach, who's a graduate of Pacos, he wasn't very happy. You know, he went and saw the results and he started walking down all mad and stuff like that. I wanted to laugh, you know. But like I said, uh, it was, you know, good meet. You know, these kids worked hard all year. You know, they did everything I told them to do, you know. You know, if I told them to jump, they'd ask me how high Coach Hama. They would do everything, everything, you know. It wasn't as talented as the team that I had two years ago, but, you know, they were, you know, talented team, very talented team. We knew Pacos was going to be the competition all year. I think they beat us like once all year. Uh, we beat them three times, three times and stuff like that. Everybody knew, you know. You know, we had a chance to win, win state and we, you know, we proved it. We, and like I said, you know, very proud of these young boys. You know, they, you know, they did everything they could, you know, to win that state championship. Okay, thank you.
I've been at Laguna Acma for a very long time and I've seen a lot of championships come way by, way, I mean, probably the minute Laguna Acma opened. Okay, we see the girls, we've seen the boys. Uh, and I've seen a lot of championships come through and we've been recognized and we've been known throughout Southwest, not only for the girls, but for the boys. Now that they've got their 23rd championship, we're also being, um, recognized for that. So it's a great privilege. And these young men really worked. I mean, they knew they had a challenge ahead of them. And I've never seen a team work so hard together because cross-country is different. You run as an individual, but at the same time, you have to run as a team. And they really ran as a pack, or what we call a pack team. They had their, between their one and fifth runner, the time was so close that I, I know, I've... It's been a long time since I've seen that. So they, they really worked. They knew what they had to do and they knew that they wanted to bring that blue home. So they really had that passion. They had to run. So they really did a really outstanding job and we still, good to see most of them again for the next two years, so. Other schools, watch out. Laguna Acma is still here.
You know, we, we got to the cross-country meet and Coach Matt Henry, we coached together for years. He was, uh, the head track coach and cross-country coach at the University of New Mexico. And he said, "What do you think?" He says, "The race of the day is going to be Pacos and Laguna Acma." He said, "That's going to be the big one." And in any classification, by far, we, those were the two teams with the most fans. I mean, it was really packed. It was down to the wire. And I happened to be walking by this group of young men before the, uh, before the meet. And, uh, I, they led me into their huddle and I had the chance to tell them, "Run, run like a pack. Run like champions. You guys have worked for it. This is your day." And they did it. They perhaps are not the most talented, but they do have the biggest heart that I see. They really came through. Being on our team, this gentleman was our sixth runner, but our sixth runner on 90% of the cross-country teams in the state would be the number one runner. And, uh, he did score for us at state and did a fantastic job. Mr. Cameron Sanchez. Cameron Sanchez, he's awesome.
Good job, Cameron.
Good job, Cameron. And just to let you know, the other runners that we have, it's very difficult to schedule anything with all the events we have, but they are, we do have our district opening basketball game against Stancia tonight. So we're on our way back from over here, over there. So they are there and we'll get them their awards tomorrow. This gentleman is, I believe, a sophomore also. Dion Lukey, oh, fresh, oh, he's a freshman. Uh, Dion is, uh, was in the top 10, so he was an all-state runner. And, uh, he did some scoring for us, freshman. Dion Lukey Baloo, all-state state champion. I tell you, we only have two seniors, but boy, did they have some senior leadership. I was in a position where I was able to see the final turn for about the last 300 yards of the race. And this young man pulled a muscle in his leg and it actually looked like he was running with a wooden leg the last few hundred yards. He would just going on one leg and swinging the other leg around. Just, you talk about gutting it out. That was as gutty a performance as I've ever seen. He, uh, ended up fifth in state and he was an all-state runner and showed a lot of guts. Joshua Garcia. Our other senior. I know there were a lot of teardrops last year. We were ready for the state meet and right before the state meet came out, unfortunately, the grades came out and he fell one point short of being eligible for the state meet. And he was one of our top runners last year. And that was a heartbreak for all of us. But to his credit, he realizes that academics aren't the most important thing. It was a lesson hard learned. But he came back instead of pouting. He came back twice as strong as he ever did. And he was the state runner-up and the leader of our team. Mr. Justin Cino. Once again, uh, thank you, board and Mr. Superintendent for the invitation. And once again, uh, we are very proud of the 2014 New Mexico State Cross-Country Champions.
Mr. Craylan, I'd like to let you know that three of these boys are my grandsons.
We'd like to thank Mr. Will Esteban. Instead of sending them in the car to go get a cup of sugar from the neighbor, we're making them run everywhere to get it. Thank you, Mr. Esteban.
Good job, guys. Excellent job. Excellent job, Matt. Good job. Excellent job.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg.
Good job, guys. Yeah, don't forget the trophy, though, don't you?
What a wonderful presentation.
Yes.
Thank you. Good job.
Good job, guys.
Good job, Mom and Dad.
Here we go. Item six, presentation. That's an action item. A, IPP, Bob Teneca.
Mr. Esteban, Superintendent Space, uh, board members, staff. Um, it's a privilege to, uh, for me to be here this, uh, this evening to, uh, give you a briefing on our IMPACT-Aid program. This evening, what you have before you is a revision of our IPP. Okay, I think we're having a little bit of technical difficulty here, so if we can get some... Okay, um, I wanted to start off with some IMPACT-Aid basics. The IMPACT-Aid program is a federal program administered by the Department of Education. If we could go back to that slide. Uh, it's a program that is in lieu of tax, where the federal government basically pays, uh, its property tax to local school districts for children, uh, who live on federal lands, including Indian lands. This is not a Native American program. It's a program that has children that live on federal lands. Uh, the, currently, the, um, the GCCS, uh, funds, um, teacher salaries. It also funds, uh, supplies. It, um, funds, uh, professional development for our teachers. So there's a number of things that our IMPACT-Aid program funds. Uh, we are part of that 75-25% equalization formula that is, um, administered by the, the state. Go to the next slide. Okay, what I've been doing since I've been with the district, I've been asking the question is, what is our financial position as a school district? Um, what I was able to do is, I was able, I was able to go back to 2011 and look at the amount of money that we get from the federal government in the form of vouchers. And I also compared that to, uh, our expenditures. Our business office was very helpful in helping me, uh, get this information. What's unique about IMPACT-Aid is that it's not a forward-funded program, federal program, meaning that Title VII, before school starts, we already know what we're going to be getting in regards to funds. Pick, for example, the, the, um, the table, the very, uh, the Title VII. You see the allocation already, the 268,000. We already know we're going to be getting that at the beginning of the school year. But with IMPACT-Aid, being that it's not, um, forward-funded, we really don't know how much we're going to be getting in, um, that year until the school, the school year starts. And then that's when we find out how much we're going to be getting in IMPACT-Aid. The IMPACT-Aid program is, uh, very bipartisan. As you know, we're going to be having a new congress that's going to be starting, uh, in fact, they started this week. The president's budget comes out on February 1st and at that time, uh, February 3rd, and at that time, they're going to be talking about the, uh, the budget or, you know, the, the government's budget. So one of the things that I was told today by our, um, our advocacy organization in Washington is that, uh, IMPACT-Aid has always been, um, forward-funded. I'm not forward-funded, but, uh, the funding that we get has been like that since the beginning of the program. So we don't know how much money we're going to get when the school, uh, school starts. So that's why it's really contingent upon our budget office to be very conservative on how we spend the IMPACT-Aid money because of the equalization. Um, as you'll see, um, on the first table, the, uh, after the 75% deduction, you'll see what the, uh, the number of students, 947. Uh, we get $267,000 for that, for those students. And the children with disabilities, we get 157,000. Children with disabilities, which we consider sped, get 100%. They're not part of that 75-25 equalization. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand that. And this year, what we've done with the special education program is that they've come to our, uh, our program and also to the business office to make a request for those special education funds. So it's the first time that the director has come to our program. And I think it was, it's, it was a very good move because the special education department really needs those funds. Okay, um, in regards to the revised, um, IPP, um, the document provides a basis for discussion. Uh, one of the things that we talked about in regards to the current IPP that we have is that we have a analogy that I would like to use is that we had a very beautiful house, but we did not have a foundation. We didn't know how it was going to be implemented. So what we did is that when we looked at the current revision of the IPP, that it provided us a basis, a foundation, if you will, to build upon. And it also took into consideration that this, uh, this IPP needed to be, uh, user-friendly. And it would, and also I think to be looked at as a growth plan that we would build upon it through discussion and dialogue. And it would be used as a tool for both parents and tribal leaders to assess the district's performance, the meeting's goals, educational goals. And this data, which I'll, which I've been compiling, would, uh, identify the deficiencies. And then to develop a strategy or a game plan on how the district would address that deficiency. Okay, here's a, a timeline that, uh, we, with the help of the IPAC, developed. What we're starting right now is that we're going to start, uh, working with the, with the parents, with the tribal leaders and have a discussion on what the data is telling us and what do we need to do and what are the findings and the recommendations that we need to incorporate into the IPP to modify it and improve it for the FY 1516, uh, school year. That will happen from January to May. And then in May, we'll meet with tribal leaders and parents, to discuss the IP for modifications. And then, uh, present the IPP with modifications to the school board for approval. This will be in June. And then in June, from June to September, we'll talk about the implementation. And we'll meet with tribal officials, uh, on the educational goals, uh, programs and financial, the financial reports. And then in November, uh, we'll disseminate information of the, uh, IMPACT-Aid program evaluations. And at that time, the state puts out a, what they call a tribal education status report, called a TESR, which we provide information to the state of NMPED in regards to attendance, regards to safety. All of that's incorporated in there. And then in December, then we present the, uh, the, uh, IPP to the school board for their approval. So I'm hoping by next year, when we do this, we do it early in December. So that's kind of the timeline that we're looking at in the implementation of the, uh, of the, uh, IPP. Okay, um, what I wanted to show you is that I've been working on this, very comprehensive, uh, tribal report. Included in this, uh, report are, includes school demographics, uh, district report cards, 2013, 2014 SBA data, SBA growth data, scale scores, attendance data, graduation rates, our, our applications, our report on our school district initiative that is a sort of a, uh, a grant that we get from the state to do innovative themes in education. And our main focus has been on parental involvement. So the report is in here and then, of course, the tribal, uh, education status report. Okay? Here's a quote I want to end my presentation with. Just that you can, um, this is a quote that I got from Dr. Space at our last meeting. It's, uh, he said, "You can spend a lot of time complaining or you could provide solutions to influence decisions." One of the things that I've shared with our IPAC is that they're advisory, they're in an advisory capacity. They provide advice and through their advice, they provide influence. And one of the things that I've always stressed on them is that don't undermine your influence. You can have some positive influence. So I just wanted to end with this, uh, quote and I, um, I want to, um, thank all of you for helping us. I know, um, Dr. Space and, um, Will and Emily. We've all had discussions about this IPP, um, our IPAC, um, our attorney. So I just wanted to, um, thank you for that. I'll open it up to any questions at this time.
Any questions? Moving on, I, I'd like to add this fact. We did have a meeting this summer, I mean, previously to us coming here on the Indian Policy Procedures. And one of the things that I would like to bring out is that, you know, we as, as the district are the local education agents. We've got to be mindful of that. We need to continue to go on that dialogue and continue to address these things as, because it's incumbent on our district to do that. Alright, thank you for allowing me to...
Mr. Stone.
I'd like to step forward a little bit. I'd like to send our appreciation to, uh, you for all the work that you've done. I know that you, you spend a lot of considerable time trying to iron things down and trying to keep the lines of communication open and we really appreciate and providing us the opportunity to meet with you and see the differences between the, the various, uh, packets that are going out and, and allowing us to voice our opinions and do that. And I know it took a lot of work, but we are proud. So I really thank you for all the work you've done.
Also, please let the parent policy wise group know that we are aware of their work and we are appreciative of what they're doing. And I think you have a meeting tomorrow.
Yes, we have a public hearing at Malon Elementary that's starting at 6 o'clock.
I did get invited and I hope that I can make it.
Okay.
Oh, you're very welcome. Okay, Dr. Space, I would recommend the crew. There's a recommendation by the superintendent to approve the Indian Parent Policy Procedures. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Next item on the agenda is, uh, item seven, citizens to address the board. Is there anybody out there? Mr. Modi Kewes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate you guys letting me come here and speak to you today.
I appreciate you guys letting me come here and speak to you tonight. I've got a couple of issues I'd like to talk to you about. The first one is Dr. Space. I would like to commend Dr. Space on what he's been doing in our community since you guys hired him. One of the big things I saw in the paper today is getting our teachers that are going through their teaching program paid. I know when my wife did her student teaching, guys, it put a financial burden on our family heavily. And I, I think it's commendable what Dr. Space has done there, getting these student teachers to get paid while they're doing their student teaching, guys. That's just fantastic. He's also been an asset to us in our economic development board, so that you know that. We're fixing to start Second Street, from High Street down here to the bridge. And after that, Dr. Space has volunteered to come on board with us to help with funding. Basically, all we're asking for is board approval because it'll be easier to get funding to do the street in front of the school, if the school's on board with the city. Uh, when we get ready to do that, it'll be after we finish this phase of Second Street, we'll come to you with the Council of Governments with a presentation of what we're going to do here. Okay, we'll hit up Dr. Space for a place on his, uh, on your agenda. So thank you, Dr. Space, without a doubt, without a doubt. Guys, it was a great hire, okay? Um, the second thing I've got here is the athletic policy at Grants High School. Mr. Trujillo took off, and I liked what he did at Unacaman. I believe it's time to do it here at Grants. We are not a private institution, we are a public institution. And the only ones that were hurting with that athletic policy are the very lowest that we have, okay? The poor, the single parents. Those students are the ones that were hurting with that athletic policy. That might be the one thing that might keep a student in graduate, is we change that policy and he makes the grade, and he all of a sudden play baseball, run cross-country track. You know, I mean, it's time to change that policy, okay? I know how Mr. Vanderbur and Mr. Autry feel about it, but we're not Yale, okay? We're not a private institution. We're a public institution. We need to do what's right for every single person, not just the good grades, the guys that made the grades, okay? On that note, it brings me to Veterans Day, and if I could, I'd like to approach the board What I've given you there is a memorial the city of Grants is going to put in. We had a gentleman approach us named Jose Alvarado. His grandfather served in the United States, maybe during World War Two. He's paying for this memorial. It's not costing us anything to put it in. If you look at the, at the second page of this, this is something that I'm very proud of, okay? If you look down there at the very bottom, it says, "This stone is dedicated to the uncompromising vigilance and tiresy dedication of all those who keep watch for America's unsung heroes. Missing in action, World War I, three thousand three hundred and fifty. World War II, seven thousand, seventy-four thousand fifty-eight. Korea, eight thousand twenty-six. Vietnam, sixteen hundred forty-three." Total of eighty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-two veterans are still missing, guys. Okay, they've never come home. Since nineteen seventy-four, we've been an all-volunteer force. Okay, nobody's drafted, nobody's forced to go. And they take only the best now. They don't just take anybody coming out of high school. They put you through a program, and they take only the best. It's a job interview. And if you look at the wall of there in Grants High School, you'll see names and pictures like Cody Rivera, some of our besties, our scholar athletes, okay? That's who they want now. They're not just taking anybody. And since nineteen seventy-four, since we've gone to an all-volunteer force, we've fought in all kinds of places. No one is missing in action since we went to an all-volunteer force, okay? And that's one of the main reasons, coming back to Veterans Day, that the school needs to recognize Veterans Day as Veterans Day, okay? Everybody says freedom isn't free, and it's not, okay? And there's also another story, time is money, okay? So here is my question to the calendar committee and all of you here. Time is money and freedom isn't free. How much time have you spent defending this nation's freedoms that you enjoy every single day? I'm sure the only person here that can say anything about that is Mr. Esteban, okay? What have you done to earn the day off, much less move it, okay? The Scory Chavas called me to explain the school policy on their holidays. I know the policy, I worked for the school for five years. I also know that Veterans Day was not even an option this year. It was already on the calendar, moved. It was not even an option to have it where it's at. My question to you once again is, freedom is not free. Time is money. How much time has anybody in that calendar committee spent defending the freedoms that you enjoy every single day? And once again, the answer to that is zero. It's just, it's mind-boggling, guys. There's no way that the federal government put in Veterans Day so Grants and Coppola County Schools can have a five or six-day weekend. Veterans Day needs to be observed where it's at. We're going to dedicate this memorial on March ninth, and I'm going to invite every one of you to come to the City Hall to do this, okay? March ninth at five-thirty, we will, we will dedicate this Veterans Memorial. It'll be right by our flag before you walk into City Hall. Another thing we're going to do, we're going to have our first annual Veterans Day party this year, and it will be done on November eleventh, right after we have our little deal down at the Vietnam Memorial Wall, Freedom Wall, we'll call it. Then we're going to go down to City Park, we're going to have a barbecue. It'll be free for everybody in recognition of all of our veterans. And it's time for the school to recognize this, guys, okay? The last thing I have today is the last time I was at this meeting, Ms. Casadas came with her GEO bond, okay? And me as the mayor and as a citizen, I'm going to support that. And I want you guys to be aware of that, okay? We're going to support that bond. It'll be good for our county, it'll be good for our community. And I wanted you guys to be aware of that, okay? Where I stand is as the mayor, the council, I voted, not voted, but they voiced unanimous support to completion of the service. The only thing that I found disturbing that night was when Mr. Esteban said he was really glad that he didn't have to vote on that. As the president of our board, Mr. Esteban, you've got to have the leadership, and that leadership should have said, "We're going to support this," or "We're not." Not say, "Now I'm glad I didn't have to vote on that." That's not leadership, guys. So maybe after this next election, we might want to look at what we're doing up there on that board as far as leadership goes, okay? Once again, I thank you for your time. I invite you all to please come down for our Veterans Day party and our dedication of this memorial.
Go on to item eight, personnel doing their, any hires for retirements, resignations?
Sorry, evening, good sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Board, Dr. Space. We have two items for you this evening. One is the usual, disapply, recarbon, and resignations. Up to this point, have a go. Answer any questions you may have.
I have one question. There's a letter that follows this list and gets this page from.
The, uh, the second item is a letter that Ms. Davis was referring to is, "We have an employee who's requesting a leave of absence to attend to his traditional obligations." And, um, the letter is there from the, from Governor Viall, and, um, he's requesting a leave of absence for the remainder of one year. So he will remain an employee, he can just be, uh, a leave of absence, so he can, he has obligations.
This has gone on before.
Yes, yes.
But it needs to be brought to you for.
Yes.
Any questions? No? Space?
I recommend the board.
This motion to.
I'll send them the big motion to.
All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you very much.
Go on to nine, budget finance, eight, facility use fee schedule.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Esteban, Dr. Space, and staff members as well as members of the community. I have a present for you, and this is not an action item, but basically a proposal for facility use fee schedule. And this schedule is based on other facilities, fee schedules that are used by other districts in the state of New Mexico, so it is comparable to those fee schedules. Now, um, this is subject to any recommendations as far as any changes that you foresee. In addition to that, um, the second page that is attached to that fee schedule is specifically for Grants High School auditorium. And this was requested by Mr. Autry to have a specific fee schedule just for the auditorium separate than the, the facility use fee schedule for the district. Now you'll note that those are listed either on hourly, daily, or seasonal rates. And, and basically, it's just that we can recoup some of the fees that are, that are being imposed by, by wear and tear on the facility, as well as maintaining the lights and all of the utilities. So that, that's kind of the reason that this facility use fee schedule was initiated. In addition to that, uh, for grant purposes, as far as GIRA or other types of grants, in order for us to, um, expense a facility use fee within the grants, we have to have a fee schedule that is approved. So this is mainly for your review and potential action or approval in the future.
Yes, looking at the, at the, on the second page, you know, for the district use of the auditorium, you know, you say the performing arts, you know, the class, the drama. I know now in the future, they're going to start utilizing the college because it's free. You know, it, there are students, they're in our program. If we can't afford to allow them to use our facility, we need to cut the programs. You know, us as taxpayers, we pay for it. There are students, so, but yet we're charging our kids to use our, our own facility.
Are you talking about our kids?
Yeah, our drama program. So now, instead of using our facility, they're going to go to the college because the college is going to offer it to them for free. You know, if we can't as a district let them utilize it for free, then why do we have the class, you know? Out of, you know, as a, as a citizen. And if we're taxpayers, we're paying taxes, we're the ones that built this place. You know, and for us to charge our own students to use it, to use it, it's not fair. You know, so I can't support anything, you know, where we're going to charge our own students to, to use it. You know, get rid of the drama program if we're going to start charging it. You know, I don't think we charge the football players, you know, or the football team for the sod or for, you know, to keep, upkeep of the grounds. You know, we built that.
I'll say that out loud.
I, I know, I'm just, it upsets me.
Well, no, this, this is not for the students though, is it?
Yeah, for district use.
I think what we need to have is clarification. For one thing, I, I did request, and it's not here, that like, for example, our spelling fees are during the day, there, there should be no charge at all for those. So, you know, I think what we'll need to do is have, uh, uh, Mr. Autry come back and.
Maybe give us a list of who, who specifically are they addressing? Because it's like, uh, Diances, you know, wonderful group from Unacaman Council, Cubero, Silvietta, or any other other.
Well, it's even, it's even the Grants High School, you know, drama that can't use it because they have to pay. So they prefer to go to NMSU to use their gym for free. They're on a.
Yeah, I don't have a response to that. I just, that's what I'm saying for, you know, in a labor time.
Yeah, I, I guess I was not clear on.
I know it's not a honey maker. Yeah, you know, I know it's not, you know, big money maker like basketball and football, where we recoup some costs.
I agree with what you're saying.
But it's not a, it's not about the money. You know, we built that facility for our kids to use, you know, not to charge them to use it. So, you know, if we can get some of those answered, those questions, that, you know, I just.
Good thing this isn't an action.
Yeah, it just, it upsets me.
And, uh, I, I did review the board policies, and the board policies in this state that any district-related activities, as well as activities that are in support of the function of the LEA or educating students, that those should not be imposing any fees. And so I will definitely look into that kind of question.
And that's it. This should be, are we talking about licensed tech people or are we talking about in-house?
It's the kids.
So that's fifty dollars an hour that you charge the minimum.
I think we talked about this a little bit, and I think, you know, that might be one component if we're going to go through this, you know, accommodate for the group who comes down to it.
You know, and even if, when you get down to it, you know, like for nonprofit, you know, whether it's a county or the, the city or, you know, one of those other organizations that choose to utilize it, you know, what we've got to remember, you know, it's a rental fee, three hundred and fifty a day.
For example, the, the activity that just Mr. Hicks, Mark Hicks expressed, what if they chose to go into the facility? There's a good example.
You know, we're going to charge them, when in all reality, if it wasn't for the citizens of Civilo County, that building wouldn't be there, you know? So we start charging every nonprofit. Yeah, for profit's a whole different deal, you know, charging whatever you want to charge them, but when it comes to, you know, nonprofits, I still have a little bit of heartburn charging, you know, some of those organizations that aren't there making money.
Right, and, and district policy does state that nonprofits, including the Boys and Girls Club, as well as other clubs or other organizations that are similar to that, do not impose fees. So this would, this would essentially be specifically for profit entities.
Okay, so then we would have to take off that because right here, it shows nonprofit, deposit, rental fee, and so on. So we would have to actually take it off from the, from that.
Right.
For profit, basically. And, and I can see for the nonprofit, you know, charging them for the technician fees and stuff like that, that would be, right, uh, but, you know.
The technician fees are for, so that they can pay the, the students?
Yeah, and that's understandable. It's just the, the rental, things like that, you know, but the technician fees, I mean, that's, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. It's just the other fees, you know, the rental.
Yeah, I guess I'd always encourage you, Dr. Space, to find out a little bit more about, especially, I mean, the drama thing, that sounds very strange.
Yeah, the nonprofit, we still have, you know.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree, I understand what you're saying.
And, you know, something like that, it's kind of hard to charge, you know, a rental fee to, to the county or to the city or the. fee to, to the county, or to the city, or the governance, you know, choose to use it. Okay.
The next item for presentation, and this is for presentation of approval, are the expenditures of December. And you'll note in your board packet, the listing of accounts payable, activities payable, as well as payroll. And in the accounts payable, there were 882,345.35. Activities payable was 64,912.18. And the payroll was 2,433,582.6. The grand total of all of the payroll and accounts payable listing was 3,380,839.59. And this was activity for December.
Any questions? No, Dr. Space?
I recommend approval as presented.
Do you need a motion?
Make the motion.
Good. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Number four.
Uh, and this is the New Mexico Autism Project. This is an initial budget bar, so it is for the initial funding of the autism. We just, we received the award letter in November, in late November, and I met with Denise to go over the funding for this, as she wanted to break out for it. You'll note in the, in your packet, it does have the scope of work for the autism project, as well as the funding of how she proposed to have those funds be expended. The amount that we were awarded for fiscal year 2015 was 8,674, which will go towards professional development. It indicates salaries, but those are actually substitutes for professional development. In addition to that, some general supplies of materials, software, and, and then lastly, the indirect cost that is associated with the fund. So the proposed bar is for 8,674.
Any questions? No, I recommend approval. Okay, second amendment? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Item B, action item, statement of change of request.
Uh, and this was discussed at the last board meeting in regards to the Sibley County Educational Foundation, change in the agent naming. And this is basically updating the actual registered agent on the foundation. Previously, it was Amberi Gallegos, and I as the successor would be listed as the agent. And there was some discussion as far as the director, but that's not listed in this, in this change at all. So it's strictly to have Amberi Gallegos removed and myself placed as the registered agent on that, on the foundation.
Any questions? No, Dr. Space, I would recommend approval as presented. And you heard the recommendation, motion to approve, thank you very much. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Go on to item B, audit report.
And we have with us Robert Gonzalez from Accounting Consulting Group, and he's gonna do a little bit of a recap on the audit itself. I do have the full report for your late night reading pleasure, if you ever need to fall asleep, you can, you can go over that. But I'll, I'll give the microphone over to Robert.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm here today representing Accounting Consulting Group. As Vermont stated, my name is Robert Gonzalez, I'm the supervisor there. And we have been auditors of Grant Sibley for, for several years now. And this year was probably the most challenging going into it, just due to the turnover. Most of the time, as auditors, when the number one person wants to let both people leave, we tend to expect a huge issue, either with internal controls still being implemented, financial data decay. And fortunately, when we, when we started the audit, and as you see the, the results, there are more findings. However, our, our initial thought of having a lot of issues did not turn out. So our hats off to both the Charge of Governance and Vermont and the staff, because it, it turned out to be an okay audit, okay? We started our, our audit and our interest conference the week of July 8th of 2014. Our exit conference date was November 10th, that's when we met with members of the board, those charged, or those top management. The deadline for the audit was November 15th, as it always is to be put into the Office of the State Auditor. We got an okay to print, which meant the financial statements were in good enough shape to, to move on from public records. And we got a release date of December 29th, which means that five days after that, it could become public records. The types of opinions that you guys received, there is a disclaimer of opinion, which is the worst type. There is a qualified opinion, which is in between. And then there is an unmodified opinion, meaning the users of the financial statements and the public can materially rely on the financial statements. You guys received an unmodified opinion. And again, hats off to you guys. They had a huge challenge, not only with the turnover, but just with a normal audit. An audit is very in-depth, it takes a lot of hours on both the auditing firm side and the school district side, okay? You will see also a report in there, which we call a yellow book report. It is basically referencing all of you guys' financial statement findings. And on this one, again, we did not see any resolved findings. In prior years, you had two findings, and current year, you guys had a total of eight. Okay, so again, we did see a little bit more findings, however, most of the time, we see that when there is turnover. Again, you see a lot of issues, one, much less both, of the top people leaving. Your unmodified opinion also came with your federal award program. Grants will always have a single audit, which is related to your federal programs. And in this year, you guys had an unmodified opinion, the best opinion you guys could receive. The four programs that we did audit this year were Child Nutrition Cluster, it is your school lunch, as, as some people have known, Schools and Roads, or which other people call your Forest Reserves, your Impact Aid Program, and your SIG School Improvement, which was related to our. Those were your four simulatic programs that we tested as auditors, and again, you guys received the best opinion, you had an unmodified opinion. Going to the findings, again, you guys had two repeated, six new. However, there was only one new material weakness, and we could mostly contribute that to just the transition period. What we would do as auditors, is we'd recommend you guys focusing on the material weakness findings. I believe Vermont has already taken steps to either get rid of, or move forward and try and, and fix these problems. So overall, we would say that we were very cautious moving into this audit season, however, you guys did an excellent job with the challenges that were put in front of you guys. So I would recommend that you did have one federal award finding, and it was related to indirect costs. We would definitely recommend that you guys focus on that. Now with the budget shortfalls across the three states, the federal government is really looking at findings for, for on the simulatic side. You guys will be receiving, those in charge of governments will be receiving a, what we call an AU letter. This is a summarized report of everything that happened during our audit, ranging from any disagreements, which we did not have, any adjustments that were proposed, any adjustments that were not proposed because of materiality levels, and then again, summary of the findings. So you guys will be receiving that. One thing that I would like to let everybody know is GASB 68 is coming next year. We don't know the full impact yet, but we did discuss it in the exit conference. And basically, what that's going to amount to is your ERD and your RHC funding sources, they are gonna have to report their liability now, whether the program is underfunded or overfunded. Most likely, it's gonna be underfunded. And that is gonna be passed down, your, your portion is gonna be passed down to the district, and that will have to be put on your financial statements next year. Again, we don't know the full impact, but we know it will impact you when you look at your net assets at the end, your assets, financial liabilities, which are your net assets. Again, this is a new GASB, it's gonna affect everybody across the United States. So going out for your bonding, that type of stuff, you may have a, a new issue related to any GASB 68 implementation next year. At this time, I open it up for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Nice working with you, and you had a nice audit.
Thank you.
So the, in the audit report, there is a management discussion section, the first portion of that audit report. And that does have tables in regards to the statement of net position of the district, and it's going back five years, so you can evaluate how the district is, and we have increased over the past five years as far as our, our net position. And you can also evaluate as far as our performance financially. I think that would give you a better indicator on, on our finances. And if you'd like, I could go into more depth in a, in a future board meeting, or I know we did discuss it briefly in the Finance Committee meeting, or in, or in another Finance Committee, we'd definitely discuss as well, so.
There's no further questions, move on to item F, it's an action item, net position of exist absolutely properly. Robert, thank you.
And this final item is the request to dispose of some items that have been located here in our boneyard. And the listing of those items is on the last page, the inventory list there indicates all of the items. All of these items are no longer being utilized by the district, and have also been, some of them have been out of service for multiple years. So this request is to have an auction pose on the public auction website, so that those can be sold off, and then essentially, we can make, make a little more room for disposing of other assets, so.
Okay, I would, I would recommend approval as presented, and I'm very pleased that this is happening. It's something that I've wanted us to start to do, so.
You have to say, you know?
Right.
All right, you heard the recommendation by Dr. Space, is there a motion? Make a motion for approval, thank you. Second.
Second by Mr. Chandler.
All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go on to item M, facilities, Mr. Mark, action item, A, David's budget extension agreement.
The second street.
Just kidding.
Long ways from second. Not even in outfield. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Space. I had worked before you last month, this item on the paving extension. Today is the, the formal finalization of it, with the, leaving the signatures of the board president, board secretary, to proceed forward with the state. We did get an authorization and get an extension up until June, of June 30th of 2015. So that will give us time when the weather warms up, we can finish the, the paving project and still be able to utilize those funds. Any questions?
No questions. I would like to make approval as presented. Accommodation, is there a motion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name?
Thank you.
Item B? Okay, we have a superintendent's report, status report, eight board member recognition.
Before I go on to that, the status report, Katamond, Mark and I met with the Critical Capital Outlay last week, and have been meeting, and I've been meeting, working with the individuals at the Public School Facility Authority on, on what was really important in terms of additional funding. And with that, at our meeting there in Santa Fe last week, they approved the additional funding for two more classrooms at Cubero Elementary. So we'll be able to proceed in that, we'll, we'll get a, an MOA on that, that will probably, I would suspect, will come next month before you. In addition, our Los Alamitos Middle School principal has strongly advocated for a new middle school with an occupancy of 475 students. Historically, over the last several years, we've been right about between 435 and 440. Her belief, and I, I support this, that, is that if you build it, they will come. And with that committee that we, we have at Los Alamitos, they've looked at the data, they, they've worked with the facility representative from the state. And again, when we presented last week, essentially, without question, they approved the project at 475 students. So that, it really helps us, because we thought we might have to find funding elsewhere for both of those projects, which were much needed to get that done. And that's going to be taken care of, so.
Very good, very good.
Then last week, I met with the University of New Mexico here. They, they wanted to talk to, talk about several of the. They wanted to talk to, talk about several of the programs that they've had. The one that I think is really critical for this community is the BA MD program. They're looking to get local kids from both Laguna Acma and Grants High School to enter into the BA and then MD program, grow our own doctors. And they've had a hard time recruiting. I spoke with Mr. Alexander today, and he gave me the green light. I have responded to them that you have to hit the parents, you can't just hit kids, you've got to talk to the parents. So, the University of New Mexico was going to sponsor the refreshments at our science fair. And on the evening, when the parents are there with the kids, they're going to talk and hand out information on this BA MD program. So that's one opportunity. And they'll cover all the water that Mr. Alexander has to kind of scramble around and get donations, they're going to take care of all of that. So, I think that's a step in the right direction for us, because you know, at ACL, it's hard to keep doctors, they turn over, as do the other medical professionals. And it's true also at Siebel Hospital, and it's your local people that will stay and commit. So that's what we're hoping, in the long run, to achieve. So, and then, I also wanted to present, we have, at the New Mexico School Boards Convention, we had some recognition of our school board members. So, I wanted to present the first of these, which is the Leadership Achievement Award, presented by the New Mexico School Boards Association. This certificate acknowledges that this board member has successfully completed 24 cumulative hours of training for Level 1 of the Leadership Development Program, set by the Board of Directors of the New Mexico School Boards Association. And it is presented to Emily Hunt Dale. The School Boards Association also presented exemplary awards. And this certificate acknowledges that this board member earned 20 or more hours of training within the 2013-2014 program year. And this exemplary award goes to Emily Hunt Dale. Another exemplary award, and again, for earning 20 or more hours of training within this past school year, goes to our vice president, Deion Sandoval. And finally, another exemplary award acknowledging that this board member earned 20 or more hours of training goes to our board president, William Esteban. And then finally, under mine, I do want to acknowledge, we had a paint shaker donation from Diamond G, and this really is for the benefit of our maintenance guys, they don't have to swing over there, it's there for them to use. I thought this was, this was really generous. And the cost isn't, isn't really what, what jumps out at me, but knowing that it really kind of cuts our guys' time in terms of having to travel, instead they can do that. So, it's very much appreciated, I would recommend approval, and upon approval, we'll send out a letter of appreciation on behalf of the school.
So they're going to be paint crazy.
It's a five gallon shaker, and it'll be utilized for the paint that you use on the athletic fields. In the past, we've had to use a drill, and we usually end up losing about two or three inches of paint, still stuck in the pipe.
That should be used for anything, though.
Yeah, we can use it for anything, but that's why we're going to utilize it for you.
All right, we have a recommendation.
All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed name?
All right.
Thank you, self-shaker.
And then, the board may want to, just, I want to follow up on, February 3rd is our board session, but it's my understanding that there may be at least one board member that has a conflict. And also, that's the board and bond election, so I'm throwing that out if we want to look at an alternative date. I didn't pick up on that when we set our board meeting dates, and I apologize.
Should we go day before or day after?
I can do the, I can do the day before, the day after, I have a meeting now.
I can do before, I can't because I have students.
How about the, how about the following week?
Well, like Tuesday would be fine.
Yeah.
Let me see, let me look there.
It would be the 10th, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have a whole basketball game that evening, but maybe be efficient.
I, the whole purpose of it is for us, as a board, to look over the goals and where you stand on that. And then, Emily has asked me to find this DVD that talks about, and I, David Attencio and I met.
You know about moving up, moving up the earlier time?
Earlier time? At 4:30. And we, we'll be done definitely by 6:00, we'll be done definitely by 6:00, if not before.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll probably be late. 4:30, I'll be late.
No, the 10th?
4:45, is that our, or say 5 o'clock instead of 5:30.
5, I think 5:00.
5?
I mean, would they, I've got, I'll be in Albuquerque on that Tuesday, so, I mean, is the day before or after of that one, possible?
I'm, I'm okay.
I'm okay after.
Yeah, I'm, you know.
Yeah, I'd rather us go Monday or Wednesday.
Let's do Wednesday.
Let's do Wednesday.
Do Wednesday?
Okay, great, yeah.
So we're talking February 11th, Wednesday, February 11th?
No. February 4th.
No, the next week. Yeah, I can't, I can't make it to 4th or 5th.
11th?
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's 5:30, 5:30?
You want it at 5:30 or normal time? I think that would be best, okay?
Sure. Thank you, that's great.
All right. We have board comments?
Yeah, I enjoyed seeing the Laguna Acma cross-country team, and recognizing them as a great thing as champions, and it's a, it's a big accomplishment, and it's neat to celebrate that, and I just commend them on their success. That's something that they will always be able to look back on and really, you know, be happy about, thrilled about. I was in school with some champions, I wasn't the champion myself, but just knowing them and the neat things that that brought to the school and the community is just really exciting, so.
It is.
That's just awesome. You know, regarding Veterans Day, I want to continue to encourage the board to think about a way we can see that we're able to do that for next year. I know we, we're the final approved, proving step in that process, but if we could influence that, it's an option this year, whereas it really wasn't last year, I would like to support that. Congratulations, Dr. Space and the staff, on the successful audit, that's a big deal. Happy to see the good things there, and thank you to Diamond G on the donation.
Basically, Joseph, we much touched upon it, we're still into a brand-new year, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
I think the same here, he's touching everything. What I'd like to see too, because I don't think we, even though I know they give us stipend, but we don't really give that much credit, credit to our coaches. Being a former coach, you don't, you don't know the number of hours she's spent on the bus, at practice, some day at the gym, some day out in the field. Maybe, it is good that we recognize the students, but like Marilyn says, she's been coaching for how many years? And I think that maybe we need to...
I thought we just did, we, we...
We can continue to go on that.
Yeah, because we just did, we did free...
Yes, we did, but we can continue.
Yeah, I hope this will all adapt, because we've got some long-term coaches that I think should retire later. But, you know, we can take that back. It takes dedication to do that. You're not going to find anybody, because I think one day they figured it out, how many hours, it's like five cents an hour that they get, and that of all the money...
Yeah, they're not doing it for the pay.
Yeah, yeah, they're not. It's for the love of the game, and the love of the team. It's interesting when you, when you have your, if you're a coach, and you have your spouse, and I remember my wife when we were young saying, "This is costing us money." You know, this...
And if the spouse follows you along, whether they get paid for...
Right, right.
It's, it's a tough avenue, you pick many money for it. Other than that, thank you, Vermont, for the good audit. You hit the ground running, and we really appreciate that. Though too many that could take over a budget like ours that still come through looking good, smelling good. Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations to Laguna Acma, the high school in Crosscar, you came, that was really nice, no worth it. One thing that I really need to bring up before our board is that we need to, you know, evaluation of superintendent, and some of the goals and objectives that we need to sit for the district, we need to really have that dialogue going and the workshop session in the future. Number one, I just think that there's an item that's going to be coming up, but I'm not going to disclose it now, but I will touch base with you on that, and see what direction we need to go in that.
Really, you said you did, now you're going to keep this in the dark? Now you're going to have my mind, my mind turning until you finally decide to tell us?
You better answer.
You should have just announced it, now I'm a nice...
Okay, so, other than that, I think, Dr. Space, to you, when you have your staff, and please let the staff, teachers, and all the people that work for us know that we are, obviously, the fact that they will do a good job, and continue to do that, because I think this, you know, testing and whatnot, common cores sometimes can drag people down, but they're hanging in there, and they're doing the best that they can do, so please let them know that we are, appreciate it. Okay. A, announcements, Wednesday, Children's Thursday, End of Spitting, 7:00, 9:30. Coming Art Center, Tuesday, February 3rd, School Board Member and Bond Election. Tuesday, February 11th, General Board Session, 5:30. Friday, February 6th, Kansas Board Member Election, 9:30. Monday, February 16th, President State Holiday, Mr. Coach. Friday, Thursday, February 20th, 21st, Local Science Fair, St. Teresa Gym. G, Local Science Fair Awards, time to make announcements, Forum Art Center. Future agenda items on the inside. And I call for a adjournment.
I make a motion for adjournment?
Second.